Good morning and welcome to the Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today is January the sixth, two thousand sixteen, and it is ten thirty a.m. We're here for a special meeting today. It's a public workshop, workshop session. All members of the court are present and the meeting is called order. Everyone will please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Pell.
I do, Father, we thank you, may you bless this life. We thank you for taking us through the holidays and all the blessings that you give us each year. Great you be with this court and discuss the issues that pertain to Hardin County and specifically to the issue we're dealing with today. Give us wisdom and guidance as to how we can best serve the people of Hardin County. But give us word of fairly west in Christ's name, amen.
Amen, thank you Commissioner. Everybody please follow me in the pledge.
Let me introduce you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is public workshop to discuss option, to discuss options with regards to the open and or concealed carrying of handguns inside all or parts of the courthouse by citizens who hold a concealed handgun license or license to carry a handgun. What I'd like to do is just make an opening remark regarding this. Other counties have made some, or the Commissioners Courts have passed an order to ban handguns from all or parts of the courthouse. This is something that I had put on the agenda for December the twenty eighth to do the same. Determine that we, after I had developed the order, which I modeled after the Jefferson County order, the Attorney General passed, or gave two opinions regarding this issue. And we discovered that we probably needed to do a little more research on this, become educated. And we also wanted the input of the courthouse staff as well as any, anybody from the public that wanted to give any input on this item before we made a decision on it. So that's the reason for this meeting here today is invite members of the courthouse and the public to come and give any input that they'd like to give to the Commissioners Court regarding this subject. And at this time I'll open the floor. Does any Commissioner want to make a statement before we open the floor to the public? At this time we'll open the floor to the public. If anybody would like to be recognized, please raise your hand. Yes, sir, if you'd like to come up to the podium. Good morning, sir.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. My name is Terry Holcomb. I'm the Executive Director of Texas Carry. And I'm here on behalf of our members that do live in Hardin County. There was a lot of confusion when the law passed and I counseled a lot of council, a lot of city councils and Commissioners Court to wait until we could get the A.G.'s opinion. The A.G.'s opinion has since come out and is extremely clear. The real choice that this Commissioners Court has is whether they're going to follow the law or not. This is a multipurpose building. It's very cut and dried in the opinion. I noticed the thirty alt six signs are posted, so you've basically been in violation of the new law since September the first. So, I mean, we are asking that you go ahead and remove it and get in compliance with the law as we would expect our elected officials to do. If not, I will be notifying you accordingly. And then following up with the A.G., we have fifty-four governmental entities who we've been able to get to comply with the law when they were choosing not to. Woodway P.D. was the last yesterday. They were brought into compliance by the Attorney General's Office themselves. And so this is a serious matter across Texas and citizens are expected to follow the law. Whether we like it or don't like it, we can debate that, you know, all day long. But the law's still the law. And I would expect that this Commissioners Court would have the integrity to obey the law. So if you have any questions, I am one of the foremost experts in Texas on Texas gun laws and this issue, so I would be happy to take any.
What was your name?
Terry Holcomb.
Okay, and you're with Texas Carry?
Yes, sir, Executive Director of Texas Carry. And we've trained, we've trained law enforcement officers all over the state on the new laws. We give seminars all over the state on the new laws. We work closely with Texas Law Shield, so.
Okay, you mentioned that what we have posted present is illegal.
That is correct.
Okay, what is legal to post?
You can post a no firearm sign because that doesn't impact C.H.L. holders. The bottom line is you can't post anything that would restrict a C.H.L. holder from carrying into a multipurpose building. No firearms is perfectly lawful. The state carves out the ability for the county to regulate long guns and things of that nature. But the state specifically says you can't regulate C.H.L. holders in Local Government Code two-two-nine-oh-oh-one. This isn't actually a new law that passed. It's actually been against the law for many, many years for local governments to regulate C.H.L. holders. A civil penalty was added because local government code, uh, local governments were ignoring the will of the state legislature. And so they added a penalty for violating a law that was already in place.
So I guess we can expect a little bit of action from you on us violating the law since September.
Uh, no, sir, I'm here right now to help educate Commissioners Court. I, I, I'm not taking any action unless y'all choose to, you know, not follow the law, then I would. My, my sole purpose from being here today is to try and help educate, that is all.
Okay, now explain again. Not following the law would be posting a sign similar to what we have out there now.
Or anything that would bar a C.H.L. holder from carrying, yes. And I'll give you an example of what.
Concealed licensed handgun.
That's correct, I'll give you an example. There's one county we're dealing with right now that has a city ordinance that says no one but law enforcement can carry in. Well, that statement is excluding C.H.L. holders. So we're currently dealing with them on removing that sign right now. It's in day setup.
Okay, have you looked our courthouse over and you kind of?
Yes, sir, this is definitely a multipurpose courthouse, without question.
Okay. Are there areas in this courthouse that concealed carriers cannot?
Cannot go, absolutely. If it's a courtroom, obviously, or an office that the court utilizes, district clerk, things of that nature, obviously, would be off limits. And you can post, yes, sir.
What about halls leading to those offices?
If there's nothing else that a C.H.L. holder would need to go down that hall for, absolutely, you would be okay in isolating that. Some of the counties we've dealt with has the courthouses on the second floor and they just ball off the second floor where you can't go up there at all. And that would be acceptable.
In this courthouse, we have three courtrooms on the first floor and two on the second floor. On the third floor, we have a detention facility, which is the only facility on the third floor is the juvenile probation department and the detention facility housed together on the third floor.
Yeah, and one of the things I've helped other counties understand is probation is an office utilized at the court. So I always cancel them to make probation offices.
The way I see it, every office on the first floor in this courthouse, with the exception of the tax assessor collector's office, is utilized by the court.
Yeah.
And so I, I talked about this with Ms. Stevens and some others, and that's the only office that I see on the first floor of the courthouse that is not utilized by the court. And I'm not sure that, that office, we utilize them in Commissioners Court for tax purposes, so I'm not sure that even that's going to be necessarily the case.
Let me make a clarification on Commissioners Court. That, and the A.G. did chime in on that as well. Commissioners Court is not a judicial court, which is what forty-six oh-three-five, forty-six oh-three specifically are referring to. Y'all operate under the Open Meetings Act. So you will need to decide whether you want to put up a thirty alt six or a thirty alt seven signs up on your meetings. Y'all are not considered a judicial court and therefore not restricted under forty-six oh-three.
Would you say the Commissioners Court is deemed a government court?
Oh, yes, it's a governmental meeting, so you can post if you so choose. It's not mandated. You can also choose not to post. My county Commissioners Court vote is not barring people from carrying in, but you can. The law does allow for that, yes, sir.
So on the, Terry, on, can, could we have allowed the thirty alt six concealed handgun license to carry but post a thirty oh-seven?
Not on the building. If you go look at four-eleven-two-oh-nine that came out, it says anything that speaks to a handgun license holder. And if you look at thirty point zero-seven E., it specifically says that it restricts governmental entities from prohibiting.
Right, Representative White, I appreciate you being here. This law does state that a state agency or political subdivision of the state that violates subsection A. Is liable for a civil penalty, which would be the Commissioners Court. So I'm understanding that it was the intent of the legislature to fine Commissioners and the county judge not less than one thousand and not more than fifteen hundred for the first violation and not less than ten thousand and not more than ten thousand five hundred for the second or subsequent violation. And each day of a continuing violation of subsection A constitutes a separate violation. So is it the intent of the legislature to fine me as a county commissioner for posting a thirty alt six, thirty alt seven sign? And in two days, the Kirkendall family would accrue eleven thousand five hundred dollars in fines because we posted that? Is that the intent of the legislature?
Well, thank you very much and for that question, Commissioner, and thank everybody for being here. And I'm just glad we're all talking about security, you know, some of the things that's happened in our country over the last, well, really the last fourteen years or so, and especially over the last year. This is a needed and deserved discussion. Not to sound over legalistic, Commissioner Kirkendall, I don't, I don't think the legislation touched on Commissioners Families per se.
No, but if I'm fined, that's taking.
Right, I understand, I understand where you're going, but.
But that's taking food out of my, out of monkey's mouth if I've got to pay the Attorney General's Office eleven thousand dollars to go to the crime victims fund.
Understand, so it is, it is the intent of the legislature that all governmental entities, may they be the state of Texas, cities, counties, et cetera, apply, abide by the law.
And so the law would be, so, so I could be fined?
Yes, yes, if, yes.
And I, I want the court to understand, or the people and the workers in the courthouse, to understand that you in particular won't be fined, but the members of this court, and I'm assuming Angela would be fined since she's on this court. I'm not sure, but, but that, that the office, the people inside the offices would not be fined, but the office holders would be fined. And so that puts us in a predicament of violating what the letter of the law is.
Yeah, and, and what, and, and who is considered the Commissioners Court? I just want to qualify that. But, you know, going back to the Attorney General's opinions, okay, and that's what they are, their opinions, okay? There could be some litigation, who knows, coming down the road, but these are opinions. What I got out of that, Commissioner, okay? It was quite an extensive reading assignment over the Christmas holidays is let, let's back up to, you know, just some of this other stuff, like, you know, open unconcealed carry and, and, and carry. And, and let me put a footnote here. I believe when Mr. Terry was before you giving some testimony, he identified a term concealed handgun license. I think now it's license to carry, it's L.T.C., okay, not necessarily C.H.L. But besides that footnote, on that point, and I want to just walk up real quick on this, but Judge McDaniel, wherever someone could, before January one, wherever a citizen, a lawful citizen could go concealed, intent was on January first, they had the discretion to go unconcealed with the same exceptions and notifications that are in the laws for signage and, you know, if there's sell alcohol and that sort of thing. So then that brings us to, you know, our, our government buildings. The same intent, if you could, you cannot go into a courtroom today. I can't go to Judge Thomas's court concealed or unconcealed. When it was, when it was just concealed, I could not do that then, and I cannot do that now. And, and so then the Attorney General, and, and I've heard some commentary about maybe he crawfished or whatever, but I, I think he, whether, whether legislature was not very expansive in saying here or there, he did not become expansive, okay? You know, the idea is, the Attorney General, I believe, provided, you know, our Commissioners Courts, the discretion that they deserve to have. Obviously, I can't go into Judge Thomas's, Judge Stovers', or Judge McDaniel when he's having court with my weapon along with offices that are essential to the courts. And I believe the Attorney General in one of those, or both of those opinions said, Judge, that that would involve a deliberation like we're having today with your officers involved with those courts to determine which of those offices are essential. I also think in that opinion, he qualified to say that that wouldn't necessarily be one hundred percent of, of every building. All right, now, getting ahead of myself, and I'll go into, Judge and I have had some discussions and, and he talked about the situation of trustees and jails and detention centers. And I told him, you, you brought up a good point. None of the opinions addressed detention centers and jails. And I gave him a number where he could start a dialogue with the Attorney General.
Well, I did, I, I talked to him and basically I was referred back to the opinion.
Okay, all right.
I can shed a little light on the correction.
And I, I, real quick, I appreciate your response.
Very much, we appreciate you.
On the clarification.
Before you go.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Pell.
Representative White, we appreciate you being here to help clarify these things for us. You made an interesting comment there when you started off about security issues. And I listened a little bit, I've been up in Austin, and was the driving force behind the law that the legislature passed, was it really concerned with security or was it concerned with protecting and extending the rights of concealed carry people?
I think it's your, I think it's your latter. I mean, who, who is James White to know if, you know, something happens and someone's concealed or unconcealed, what they will do? Okay, I, I would, I could, yeah.
To me, they're two different issues.
I agree.
Because if we're talking about security, then a legally licensed citizen right to carry, and they abide by the sign, a person with criminal intent that comes to this courthouse intend upon doing harm to a judge or someone there.
Yes, sir.
They're probably not going to pay any attention to the sign because they came here for a purpose.
Yes, sir.
So whatever we post out there, does it really increase the security of this courthouse?
Well.
Or if we want to increase the security of the courthouse, you've almost got to go to metal detectors and things like this that provide true security. So I think we need to be careful that we know what we're dealing with.
Yes, sir.
And that we don't post just because we say, okay, we're increasing security, when I don't think increasing security any by posting.
You, you bring a good point, Commissioner Pell. I remember when I was still in the classroom in Houston, you know, a few days after the nine-one-one attack in two thousand one, and I was working in a, in a school district department and I think it was about fifteen or twenty of us in this building. It was annex away from the main district building. And we had someone in there that would, you know, like, sit at the front desk. I don't think they really had a uniform or anything on, but a few days after the nine-one-one incident, they started checking our IDs. This person knows us. It was only fifteen, twenty of us in there. So you ask yourself, have you really raised the security profile? So I think you bring up a, a very good point. And, and, and a point that I've often shared with folks from around the state is we should, we, we should always be concerned with security pre-January one, twenty sixteen, or post-January one, twenty sixteen. If, if I was concerned about security on December thirty-first, you're right, maybe I should have guards. And I'm, I'm not definitely saying go do this because then, you know, I get into the jam of Unfunded Monday, Monday. But, but you're absolutely right. But I, but it, it is a discussion, I'm listening in a, in an interested way throughout the state is, is how counties and judges and Commissioners Courts attack this and, and, and the issue.
Well, my, my concern is, it looks like the legislature or, or the Attorney General's Office has the authority and intends to fine those who violate the law because they put in the statute, all the, all the, all the other talk is conjecture. What we have to go on is the, the House and the Senate passed a bill that fines the local officials for posting. And then, and then the Attorney General's opinions are as clear as mud.
Okay.
They are.
Okay.
And it say, in one part in there, it says, I think if that, if the law intended to restrict the entire courthouse, then the law would say entire courthouse. And so if I'm reading this, then what I, what I understand, Ken Paxton, to support this law, that it does not mean the entire courthouse. And so I definitely agree one hundred percent with public safety. I support our shared probation offices, county attorney, district attorney, all the offices in the courthouse, our Justice Court. I absolutely one hundred percent support their ability to post for public safety. I agree with that. But it puts me in a predicament, our legislature's put me as a commissioner in a predicament to put up an illegal sign.
Okay, and, and, and again, and, and that's a, that's a fair representation of, of the eighty-fifth session in regards to that scenario, or eighty-four, but, but again, Commissioner, would I, and I've, I kind of always knew this, I never made a beef about it, because I don't care, even though I can, I don't, okay? But it has been the statute and the intention of the legislature and statute that, you know, I remember Judge and I had this question, I asked, can I, can I walk into the courthouse, not into a courtroom? Can I walk into the courthouse of one of your annexes now, providing they're not a courtroom, okay? Concealed now, that was before January one, and he and I talked about that. And you read those opinions, the, the, the implication there is, yes. Now, what the legislature did, and I believe that was Ryan Ginn's bill, Ryan Ginn from South Texas, was, yes, then now there's some fine or fiscal punitive, you know, punitive nature to it now. If, 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 if so, you do it. But I, I, I believe what's interesting and just, you know, sitting, standing up back there and listening to Mr. Holcomb is the idea of there can be, you can have some posting, okay? I think you, you go through this robust discussion with your, with your security and your court officers and you determine what, what are those essential offices, okay? And, and, and I think, you know, I, I understand people say that the Attorney General's opinion is clear as mud, but in five counties that I'm proud to represent, Commish, and they have different layouts of the county. And some of them, the, the, you know, they have the jail and whatnot on the other side of downtown. Some like yours are sort of like in the building, in the building, okay? Some have a courtroom building somewhere else. And they have, you know, this county judge office, tax assessor cloth office in another building or on, on defined floors. So I think in the wisdom, what, what is, what, what we are thinking is clear as mud is saying, you know, Attorney General, I think he said that explicitly, maybe the legislature needs to be a little bit more specific in some instances. But again, the statute says the, you know, government courtrooms and their essential offices. Who is James White, the Attorney General, to know and to oppose upon, you know, Commissioner Kirkendall, what that essential office should be today on the sixth of, or the seventh of January, any day? So it's the, yes.
But my concern would be not the sixth of January, but the tenth of January.
Okay.
When, when we've gone and said, okay, these are the essential offices.
Okay.
And then they clearly have an out.
Okay.
And their opinion trumps our opinion. And so they're, they're not making it clear as to what specifically they are. It's just an opinion. And so then if it becomes a political issue or if it becomes some other type of issue, their office can take action to override this court and, and, and to put a fine on us. Now, will they do it? I don't know, but the intent of the law is they will. They haven't proven to me they won't. They've proven to me that they will because they've written it into the law. So I can assume that everybody in Austin's going to be my friend.
I wouldn't sue them.
No, no, but, but I understand.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Because, because my, my only, my, my only question really today is, is it legal? I don't want to place myself at risk for a fine. If, even if, if the five of us agree on what we deem it to be, but someone in Austin can deem it not to be. Then I place myself at risk and, and, and then, and then the way the law's written is each day of the continuing violation, it's a separate violation. So, so, so the action today is not just for today, but let's say it's fifteen days. So it's one day at a thousand dollars and fourteen days at ten thousand dollars. That's the minimum, it's ten thousand. So that's a lot of money to impose. And it'd be a great way to run, to ruin someone's political career or to take control of a local decision in Austin. It's not a grassroots decision, grassroots would allow us to make this decision. It becomes a bureaucratic decision from someone in Austin. And I, I personally don't want to be even named on a lawsuit.
Absolutely.
Of say thirty, forty thousand dollars because it's been three or four days. And then I would have to either hire an attorney or have our association represent us and then take time to prepare a lawsuit because.
And you don't have the money, you don't have the money to do that, nor should you get caught up in that.
Right, which is, which is my stress.
Right, right.
Can I, can I take time off? I don't know if you got, did you get a chance to read the TAC from, from the Tax Legal?
I don't have a, a, anything from TAC.
Uh, this is, this is the message from House and Bass, which represents the, the county commissioners. It says, Commissioners Court members, if the judges of your county believe that continuing to prohibit weapons in the courthouse is essential to the safe operation of the courts, I recommend the following actions to provide a clear policy and hopefully protect the county from potential civil penalties. Obtain a finding by the judges that the entrances, highways and other areas of the courthouse are essential to the operation of the courts and constitute a part of the premises of the court. Adopt a Commissioners Court order incorporating the above findings in, in section forty-six oh-three of the Penal Code, prohibiting weapons on the premises of the court, including entrances, highways and other areas. Since all weapons are prohibited, the specific notices for section thirty oh-six and section thirty-six or so, oh-seven are not required. Notice that all weapons are prohibited under section forty-six point oh-three is sufficient. So that's forty-six oh-three instead of the others. If you receive a citizen complaint or notice from the A.G., notify your legal counsel and public officials liability carry immedi-, carry immediately. We are aware that at least one county member of TAC, Public Officials Risk Management Pool, has reported a complaint and our law firm has been assigned to provide legal representation to that county. So TAC's, TAC's saying they're going to do whatever for us.
I understand, but they're not going to pay your fine, Alvin. That's going to be your fine.
What, what he just read is an opinion, just like what she read.
Yeah, it's the opinion from TAC.
And I'm glad, I'm glad they will represent us. I'm, I'm glad they will represent us and I'm glad they'll take that on, but they're not going to pay my fine.
Right, but they're.
You're not going to have a fine. Until we have case law
Right.
on this, this will eventually have case law not only due to civil, people like him filing against government entities, but also criminal activity that's going to take place because of this law, then in the future, we're going to have case law that's going to override this. What we're dealing with today, yes, there's a possibility, every statute that goes into effect is going to have a, a, a penalty on it. So they have to put that in there, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to be fined for that. There is a possibility of that, but before, you would be fined.
Their intent is to find.
You're, you're not understanding what I'm saying.
No, I understand what you're saying, but the intent.
You're going to have an appeals process that's going to go through and then it's going to produce case law and case law overrides that statute, so.
I don't disagree with that, but that's a long process for a simple solution.
But it also gives, and, and what I'm reading here, you know, like y'all were talking about the other thing, they used to follow back on section forty-six oh-three of the Penal Code, you know, and that's, that's a totally different from where you were on the thirty-six oh, no, he was saying thirty-six oh, um, six and oh-seven. So that takes that out of play anyway. I think, I think, I think, I think their intent, and I think, I think it all boils down to common sense. Because I don't think there's anyone in here, I'm looking around, that, that is not a Second Amendment person. I, I have weapons and I believe in guns, I was a police officer, all of us do. But there's also a common sense factor in everything that we do. And that's where the case law and that's where, you know, looking around at this, this, and like, like Representative White was saying, every courthouse, every county in Texas is different. We're not all the same. We have different parameters in each one. This courthouse. This courthouse is primarily used for court. It has, yes, it has other offices in it, but every entrance into this courthouse leads to a courtroom. They take inmates from the jail, they bring them into, through the entrances, they walk them through the highways. They're walking, it, you, it's, it would be no different than having a gun over in that jail.
And I agree, and I think it would've been a great exception to be placed into the law that allowed counties to exclude entire courthouses. And maybe in the next session, they can get that in there to protect you and I. Because I agree that everybody, I, I agree that public safety is number one. Does the law give me the right to post it is the issue, and that's what will go to court or what we'll have to get an Attorney General's opinion on. But I agree that every court should be safe. I believe, uh, I believe exactly what, uh, Representative White said, and what all these people here representing their offices, I agree with that. But just because we want to do something under this law doesn't make it legal. And I want to know that it's legal, okay? And, 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 and my, my only, my only objection to the whole thing is whether or not it's legal. And I appreciate Allison Bass spending their money, that, uh, that they'll represent us and all those things, I, I appreciate all of that. But I would like the legislature to give the court, the counties that right to name the whole courthouse, if that's the intent of the law. But I don't think that's intent of the law, when, when you have Governor Abbott holding a pistol on Facebook yesterday with his name engraved on it. And over the weekend had a rifle that he sent to the federal government, or a picture they sent to the federal government of come and take it. I think our governor's intent is for the citizens to be able to carry without any hindrance to the government or by the government. And, and it's not only something that our governor allows, but it's, it's his, it's his agenda. And so that's what makes me hit, wanna hit the pause button, because we, we can, we can conject all we want. The law states you will be fined if you violate it. And we can assume that we're gonna get out of it, that Allison Bass is gonna get it out, get us out of it, that Tac's gonna get us out of it, but the law states. You're in violation, and then what we need to, what we need Rebecca's office to do is to clarify. Or, because Mr. Holcomb says that thirty alt-six sign is currently illegal. And so if the thirty alt-six and thirty alt-seven sign is illegal, and it is illegal to do that, then it doesn't matter what we vote on. We have to vote according to the law, and, and that's my only question is, is it legal? Cause I, I, I agree with public safety.
I, I think it's a highly complex issue, and I'm gonna be anxious to, um, see what Rebecca. Maybe advises us after she reviews this tape, she missed some of the early, early part of it. But I go back to what I saw driving the legislature.
Yes, sir.
And what I saw driving the legislature was an expansion of rights, not a restriction of rights. Of the license carry.
Yes, sir.
So that being the case, um, I, I do believe that the legislature's gonna have to do some cleanup on it. On this particular bill, and as I understand it, Senator Nichols and Representative White, there are movements already underway to do this. You know, what the courts will get into in case law as, uh. Commissioner Cooper is talking about, who knows, and who knows when that'll come about, there's a lot of confusion on this thing. But I'm not going to cast a vote on it until Rebecca has looked at it and we see what she feels about it. Because she is our advisor, and I know that, um, Jim Allison, with Allison and Bass has given us his opinion. I'm not sure his opinion is, carries greater weight than does the Attorney General's opinion, who is the one that does these opinions. And, uh, I think it's a matter we can be tied up for a long time, spend a lot of money, and. I didn't, I saw where Jim Allison said that notify them. I would like to get Rebecca to review our insurance relationship with Tac. Because there are a lot of insurance policies that when they insure you, they only cover you as long as you don't violate somebody else's rights. And we may be looking at a situation here where an individual commissioner would not have protection, even though Jim Allison says they will defend us. I, I do think there's a bunch of unanswered questions in this thing. My final question is.
Yes, sir.
Are we under any type of time deadline to make our decision on this court?
Um, it, it, trying to recollect on that, you know, that last paragraph, I would, I would say no. Um, it, it's the intention, when it came, when the law went into effect, every, everyone is in compliance. Uh, but, but going back to my friend Commissioner Kirkendall, um, you know, with his line of, of inquiry about the fines. And I think that's really what has elevated this, and, you know, if, if these do exist, the whole, you know, maybe some. Holes or, uh, things in the statute, because again, um. The fines have triggered the discussion, because I think it's pretty settled, at least based on his A.G. opinion. That on December thirty-first at least, I, I could walk in here. Concealed. So it's the fines that have brought, that, that have elevated the discussion.
Let's see, Representative White.
Yes, sir.
When they refer to fines on individuals. Then that to me is a little bit of a clue. That they're talking about individual responsibility and not collectively, the fines not against Harden County. It's against an individual.
Yes, sir.
So that gives you a little bit of hint as to where they were going on this thing.
Yes, sir.
As far as time goes, yeah, I'll just, a, a couple of things I'd like to help y'all with, as far as time goes. That depends on how soon somebody wants to file on you, okay? I'm interested in working with you, I'm not interested in, in necessarily walking out of here today and having the le-, legal papers drawn up. Okay, I've gotta go deliver nine when I leave out here today, I don't really wanna make it ten, okay?
Make what, ten?
A legal notice that you're breaking the law, cause I will, I'll, I'll probably be the one to notify you more than likely. Um, if it's not rectified in a timely manner, and I'm willing to work with the Commissioners Court on that, I'm not ready to run out of here today. We'll see how the conversation goes. Um, as far as security goes, um, when we talk about security, it's, it's, it's very interesting to me. The Capitol is one of the most secure places in the state, and C.H.L. holders can carry there. We go to the Lieutenant Governor, I go to the Lieutenant Governor's office, I go to the Governor's office, I go to the Senator's office, and these crazy representatives, the way they scream yell at each other down on the floor. They're all carrying guns as well, um, but yet it's one of the most secure places in the state of Texas. Letting C.H.L. holders in your, in your, in your court building is not diminishing security, it's increasing security. Uh, that's just a fact, it's a statistical fact that less than three tenths of one percent of all crime committed in the state of Texas. From a class B misdemeanor and up, or, and class B misdemeanor being a minor offense, are committed by C.H.L. holders. That, you can go look that up on DPS website. Um, C.H.L. holders have a proven track record over twenty years, you're not diminishing security by actually following the law and letting. C.H.L. holders carry in this building, you're increasing security, that's just a reasonable fact. Now, if you wanna check C.H.L.s when people come in like they do at the Capitol, so when we walk in at the Capitol, they have, we don't have to go through the metal detectors, we get to go around. We just show them our C.H.L., they check it, and we go on in and we're carrying it. And, uh, that's something you can look at for security here if you would like, cause you, you were perfectly right when you said that sign's not stopping. A single bad person from coming in here.
Were you involved with legislative process?
Oh, yes, sir, I helped write the bill, uh, we're the organization that got eighty-five signatures on H.B. nine-ten, uh, very, very involved. I was at every hearing, I was at every floor debate in both House and the Senate. Uh, instrumental in getting it changed, uh, sign violation changed from a class A to a class C misdemeanor, that was our language. So very much, um, when I say I'm the foremost expert, there's a reason for that.
Well, is it true that in any lawsuit against the counties or against individual, whatever. That a court is gonna go back and look at the legislative intent in trying to fashion their decision?
Yeah, yeah, the way it will work initially is, there's no court case initially, when I file. You have three days to remove the sign, then I'm gonna file with the A.G., the A.G. will notify you if you don't take it down, they're going to fine you. They're not gonna take you to court, the A.G.'s office is going to fine you if you refuse to pay the fine, then you go to court. Uh, that's, that's, that's the way it's gonna go, and, uh, he is the Chief Law Enforcement Officer of the state, absolutely. And, uh, well, I, I, Jefferson County, I can tell you Jefferson and Hayes County are gonna lose beyond any shadow of a doubt. They're gonna lose, they have come out and basically said they do not care what the law says, they're not trying to comply with the law in any way. And they're going to lose, guaranteed. Uh, as far as a correctional facility goes, y'all have one upstairs, Woodway P.D. as well has a correctional facility. C.H.L. holders can't carry into secured area of a correction, just can't do it. So you can bar that whole room off, now, Woodway couldn't stop C.H.L. holders from carrying in the general area. That's where they had to remove their sign, and the A.G. did make them remove their sign, Colleen P.D. is gonna be removing theirs very shortly as well. So we've already had two instances of, of correctional facilities that decided they weren't gonna remove their signs, that did remove their signs. Uh, what the A.G.'s urging, so, um, I think you had a good conversation on, on the security issue. It's something I would like to see Commissioners Court think about, you know, have you a bailiff or a deputy, you know, show me your C.H.L.
It just takes money, that's all.
I understand.
Cause we have somebody that wants to volunteer to do that.
I understand, but I noticed that there isn't any security now.
That's right, you're right.
You know, I noticed that.
Not, not at the front door, not at all.
I mean, I could've walked in with a gun easy enough, of course, I'm a law-abiding citizen, I would've been lawful to walk in this building, no question. Not interested right now in taking on a class-three felony, and, and, and working that out, I can work my venue through the A.G.'s office, so. This is not as much of a big deal as people are, are really blowing it up to be, it's different, it's a change. Uh, people are unsure of it, but I think if we all work together as, as a community, then I, I think we can get in the right place, I do.
Thank you very much.
You bet, thank you Judge, Commissioners.
Anybody else want to address Commissioners Court? Yes, sir, Mr. Dardel.
I just want, uh, you guys to think, we've got former law enforcement officers, county judge, and a courthouse. All this has to do with law, and we're discussing you guys breaking the law. What kind of example is that set, you don't like the law, so you're gonna break the law, what kind of example are you setting?
We're not discussing breaking the law, we're discussing.
We're still doing it, aren't we, we got thirty alt-six out there?
That's what I just was informed, but, yeah.
Um, but, Alvin, you were talking about a organization that will defend you for breaking the law. Violating the law, really, shouldn't we just set a better example for our community, abide by the law, and like you said, if you've gotta work it out legislatively, do it. Just a thought, thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Think we've got off in the weeds way too deep in the legalese of the whole deal. When, if we drill down to the bottom line, the whole thing that we should be concerned with is the safety of ourselves and. Wherever we are, whether we're at home, whether we're at work, here in the courthouse. Commissioner Pelt touched on it, that no matter what you do, no decree, no hanging of any sign on the door. Is gonna create safety. In fact, it has the reverse effect, when you put up a gun-free zone sign, like all the schools. Or the majority of the schools in the state are, what does that really tell someone with evil intent? That that is a free-fire zone, there's nobody there with a gun that's gonna stop them if they are intent on a high body count. Same is true in this courtroom or courthouse or anywhere in town, for that matter. Anybody that hangs one of those signs is doing a disservice to their customers, the public, whomever. If somebody with evil intent walks into one of the clerk's offices and is intent on a high body count. With difference to all these guys in uniform back here, do you think they're gonna get there in time? I don't think so. I think, uh, when you really stop and consider it, um. Everybody is ultimately responsible for their own safety, and that is what I believe. If you go to intent, what the founders intended, when the U.S. Constitution was written. And when the founders of the state wrote the state constitution. And to me, in my opinion, it's a crying shame that we don't have constitutional carry in every state in the Union. To me, it makes way more sense, you should be able to carry anything you're big enough to tote. Anywhere you're willing to walk, but that's not the way the law reads, and we all wanna be as law-abiding as we can. But, uh. You know, you're getting off in the, in the fines and, and all of that stuff, when what ultimately everybody's concerned is. Is somebody gonna walk in here, not necessarily a single person, as we learned in Paris, but. Multiple assailants, simultaneous attacks, it could be a bloodbath anywhere. Sports stadiums, schools, courthouses, it doesn't make any difference where it is. But when you hang a no guns allowed sign somewhere, that's inviting the bad guys. And as we all know, the only way you're gonna stop a bad guy is a good guy with equal or more force. Than the bad guy's token, so, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the court on this issue? Don't be shy, if anybody'd like to say anything, we would like to hear it.
Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, you and I spoke the other day, and, um, I certainly at this point do not oppose the carry. Uh, my question, when I talked with my staff, their question to me was, okay. If they're going to be, be able to open carry, are we going to be allowed as employees of this county? To open carry, so I would love to know the opinion of that, and I know, Ms. Rebecca, there's some things she will need to check.
Yes, ma'am.
However, that, uh, and as I stated before, I had certainly rather see someone come into my office. And their, uh.
If they have it, you'd like to know.
I'd like to know it.
Right.
I, and I certainly am not opposed to that, but, um, you know, my employees say we want that right also. So that's a concern that I have.
Well, there's a common sense approach to that, I would say if, if the citizens are gonna be able to come in with a gun, the employees ought to be able to have them as well. But again, we will need to get with Rebecca on that and hammer that out before we make a decision on that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Because if they can't come in the county clerk's office with a gun, then we can't have one either, right?
I would, I would say that's right, yes, ma'am.
Uh, Your Honor, just real quick.
Yes, sir.
You, you can, as an administrative order, allow your offices of the court to carry.
Okay.
Through administrative order.
Okay.
Uh, forty-six oh three, notes that down there, if you'll check it out.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the court? All right.
If, uh, there's no further discussion, we'll move on to the next item, which I honestly believe is, uh, something we're not ready for. Uh, item number five, discussion and possible action to adopt an order prohibiting the possession of firearms inside all or part of the Harden County courthouse. And Justice Court buildings pursuant to section forty-six oh three of the Texas Penal Code. I'd like to recommend to the court that we table this item until we. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor for tabling item number five? Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt an order prohibiting the possession of firearms inside of all or part of the courthouse. Pursuant to forty-six point oh three of the Penal Code.
Commissioner Cooper, is it all or is it part of the courthouse?
All of the courthouse.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper to adopt an order prohibiting the possession of firearms inside all of the courthouse building.
I second. My, my question is, if we just tabled it and it passed four to one, how can we make a motion on it?
Or you can make a motion on it, it just may fail.
But if we tabled it, it's tabled, right, or no? I thought if it's tabled, it was tabled.
Supposedly.
We just tabled it four to one.
I, I personally think the motion's out of order, but that's up to the, uh.
I believe that's correct, since it's.
I'm just trying to keep us.
Motion passed four to one to table the item, it's tabled until the next meeting. The, the only thing I would say about that, and, and I think, and going back on this, and that's the reason I would second his, his motion. Is we've been informed about the signs, we need. Is we've been informed about the signs, we need to do something about that, uh, whether it has to be changed to forty-six oh-three, as they say, or something. But something needs to be done, uh, because we aren't, we are out of order as far as those signs are out there. Well, I, I think we've been advised of that, but I, I would like to talk to our, uh, county attorney and find out about that after this meeting. And if we are, then I think we'll have to take them down. Okay.
Yeah, we can make a motion Monday to take them down. We're gonna have Commissioners Court, aren't we, Monday?
I think if she says they're against the law, we take them down without going to court, but.
Yeah, okay.
That's my opinion on that.
I agree with your opinion.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn? Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall, we stand adjourned.
Judge.
Um, maybe.